We'll call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 22nd of the Pioneer Valley Regional School District School Committee. We will begin this evening's meeting with citizens' comments. Given that we have our guests seated in the front, if there are citizens' comments, if you could please use the microphone. That's at the end of the table. If there's anyone that does have citizens' comments. And also, I would like to give a minute to our panel members to please introduce themselves so that everyone is familiar with who is seated at the table, please.
Oh, my name is Doc Ryan. I'm Chair of the Board of Select from Warwick.
Todd Dexter, Select Board from Warwick.
Adam Holloway. I'm the Warwick Education Committee Chair and parent of a student at Warwick Elementary School.
Tom Wyatt, Warwick Education Committee Vice Chair.
Susan Hollins. I am consulting to the Select Board in Warwick.
Great, welcome.
Diana Noble, a member of the Warwick Education Committee and also the Chair of the Finance Committee in Warwick.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so we'll begin with citizens' comments, if there are any.
My name's Janice Starmer. I live in Warwick. My first child started attending the Warwick Center School in 1986. I've been very involved in the school since then. We developed our own school committee before we became part of the district. I was heavily involved with the building of the new school, raising funds for it, and have always been involved in public service. I was on the, this school committee in 2001 when this school was being renovated to accommodate the growing numbers we had then. I love my town. I love my district. This is the best place to live. One of the things I love about it is that each town has been able to determine for themselves how their children would be educated. I've never made any decisions for Bernadston on what they should be doing, never made any decisions for Northfield or Lydon on how they should conduct their schools. I value that. That's why I live here, is because I can have an influence in my own children's education. I'm not overrun by being in a big city and having nothing to say. I value education. I value being able, each town being able to make choices for themselves. And I would really appreciate it if this committee would see us through to the next stage of this so that we can see what the state thinks about our experiment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizens' comments?
My name's Jeff Neif. I'm the Chairman of Lydon's Select Board. And I came here tonight because I don't believe the school committee tonight is even ready to make a vote. And I'm asking the school committee tonight to not take the vote. I don't think the district is ready for this. The information that you all tried to gather, it's still coming in. I read an article, excuse me, I read an article in the paper yesterday that was new to me about possibly Warwick using part of their community school for other purposes besides education. And that brings up the issue of security concerns, Cory checks, who's coming in and out of the building. This stuff hasn't been addressed. It's the first time I found out about it. As far as I knew, the district was leasing these buildings. I don't, I thought it was the entire building. At the last committee meeting, I got a chance to speak. I asked the Chair, Chairperson there about being brought up on the agenda because previous to the, the previous meeting, I sat here for five hours waiting to get on the agenda. I finally walked out. And you talk about an agenda that is filled with information and decisions that you need to meet and gather for the month. I can't imagine what it's going to be like with another total different school on your agenda. Questions that I'm concerned, are you going to have a, is there going to be a separate warrant for the Horace Manning Charter School? Is there going to be executive sessions at your meetings with the trustees? I haven't heard any of this brought to our attention. I'm happy for Warwick that they continue to pursue whatever they need to do to keep their school open, but I don't think this is a district decision that needs to be made tonight. I think you people are being forced under the gun to make a decision that could be wrong for the district. And I just emphasize, I hope you don't take the vote.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens' comments before we begin with the old business? None? Okay. All right, so on our agenda this evening, it's discussion and potential vote regarding Warwick's proposed prospectus related to becoming a Horace Manning Charter School. So, I would like to offer an opportunity, if there's information or material that you'd like to present, and we can begin that way.
Great.
Okay?
I'm going to turn it over to Diana. Oh, okay.
Actually, there are magic documents to this. I'm there. Can you just, for folks who can't, who can't read this from where you're sitting, we do have this in print as well. Is that in the book? Is that additional to the book?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Yes, initially, we were hoping that this is something we could present. Right.
One of the questions that came up was about the budget at the last meeting. Addressing that.
Yes, sorry. So, I am here to talk about the budget and, because I think that that is very much on everybody's mind. And we have been looking for a way to explain the philosophy of the budget without trying to get into numbers in a way that might change. Because really, the Warwick Discovery School is all about change and about, and about making a school that is flexible enough to be a thriving school, whether it's small or whether it's large, and as things change. So, what I've got in front of you, and you just have, there's a couple of pages here, there's a couple of pages in front of you. I know, is Tanya here?
She is here remotely. So, she can hear and she can speak and I can put the mic up if she has questions too.
And I just wanted to let you all know, in case you were curious, I did also send this to her. Because I realized that this is a visual. So, I'm going to start by saying that the Horace Manning two budget model that we've developed has, has three very distinct goals. And I think we've been very clear all along that we are looking to be a contributing and thriving member of the district, even though the school we're talking about will have its own individuality. So, the trick is understanding how those two interact. Certainly, we would be running our school in a way that, that did things like make sure the school was secure and we certainly intend to be running it with, with all the care and professionalism that it is currently being run with. But when we're talking about the budget, first I want to point out that we are very much looking for a sustainable model. I know that I was sitting here, it seems like ages ago, when we looked at a five-year prediction of how the district would be doing based on its business-as-usual model. And it was, it was very scary. And I suspect it still is if you're still playing with those numbers. So, we're looking for a model that's sustainable. It provides a fixed amount, a clear amount that we budget on each year, but that it can expand and contract with the number of district students. We're looking for a model that's fair, and I think we've found one that is. It does not cost more than the, so, there's certainly been a lot of talk about how expensive it is to run Warwick since it is remote and small. And in this model, it does not cost more than the average cost of Bernadston and Northfield children. That's in response to a request that we had from the group here. And actually, Warwick pays more than the other towns in the way that we're covering some of the facilities expenses that right now are shared. Right now, if we do improvements to the Warwick school, we only realize 10% of those improvements. At the same time, if Northfield does improvements to its school and it saves 10% of some of those utility bills, Warwick is also, we're all sharing each other's schools. And what we're saying is, we'll be sharing, we'll be taking care of those facility expenses. Of course, we use some reference documents, and I think it's only fair to let you know what they are, because we're looking, taking a deep dive into enrollment and also into budget data. So, we have used the official October 1st count of the district students. And I'm saying district students in a very deliberate way. District students means the students that are resident in the district. We looked at all of the enrollment, and then we focused in on our taxpayers' children, to be honest, at those, those children that we have all committed as towns and as residents and as communities to educate. So, we're focusing on resident district students. But we did, of course, look at the entire enrollment. And so, that is from the official October 1st of this year. And we also referenced the official school committee budget. So, there are some page numbers on there. If anybody has any questions about which page number relates to that, something we can answer later, although I think you'll recognize some of the numbers. So, each year with the Horace Manning two, there are a couple of decisions that would need to be made. And of course, as you all know, the budget decisions need to be made in the spring for the following year. One of the decisions is the number of district students anticipated to be attending Warwick the following year. I think we're all pretty good at anticipating that. Of course, budgets done in the spring need to be adjusted later, but they don't adjust very much, at least in those six months. So, we would need to decide the number of district of students attending Warwick, and that is a decision that would be made with the district leadership. We need to decide what the average cost of Bernadston and Northfield is. Because again, responding to a request from the leadership here, it was important to look at the elementary average expenses rather than the district-wide. And those two numbers multiplied together, Warwick district students, average cost for Bernadston and Northfield, and that's how much Warwick would be looking for in a school budget to operate the school for the following year. So, going on to page two.
Diana, I'm just going to pause you briefly. We have a question by one of our school committee members.
I noticed on this page that district is in parentheses.
Then that is why.
What defines district for me in that, in that sentence?
That, that is a reminder to me to point out that district students means resident students, as opposed to kids who are choicing in, as opposed to kids who are, as opposed to kids who are tuitioning in. It's district resident students. And I know as we use parentheses all different ways these days, we use them in the air, we use them on paper, but in this case, it's just to remind us that that's a special meeting for us.
Thank you.
So, of course, the first ingredient in that, that equation is enrollment. So, I thought it might be very helpful to put in front of you what the current enrollment is. And this is fiscal year '20. We had started doing our numbers on fiscal year '19, because that's a closed year, but we were asked to look at fiscal year '20. So, this is where it is right now as of this October 1st. Pioneer Regional, the Middle School High School, has 246 resident students. And it has 51 students on top of that that are either tuition in or choice in. The total number of students coming through the doors most days is 297. And then I can go on down. So, Northfield Elementary has 155 resident students. Bernadston has 139 resident students. Warwick has 23 resident students. So, in the district, as of October 1st, we have 563 resident students. So, this is the first part in that calculation when we're deciding, if we were looking, for example, at a budget that would be based on fiscal year '20, we would have to decide what the enrollment is, and that enrollment for Warwick would be 23. It wouldn't be the 46 kids that are in the school. It would be the 23 that are resident students. And there was a hand.
Yep, go ahead, Sharon.
The Warwick Elementary School of the choice students, how many of those are brought in by staff and how many are like comparing? Is there a breakdown to let us know where those students are coming from?
The official enrollment is by town. In order to get that information in terms of who was coming in with a staff person and who was coming in from just another town, I'm not sure, I don't have that. But there is an official enrollment chart that shows which town students are coming from. I can certainly email that too, if you like. I did.
I'd like that, thank you.
Thank you, it's just a call.
No, there are 23 choice students in Warwick.
Of staff.
Yeah.
They're bringing staff.
Yeah. And I suppose that might become pertinent if you were looking in the spring at how many students are attending in the fall, if you're afraid that staff person was leaving? Is that what you're getting at? If that's the person, staff person was leaving, that choice student would leave?
I just wonder where the numbers are coming from. How many are coming from Orange? How many are coming from Greenfield? How many are coming from over the board?
Yep, we can get you that official October 1 report, or I'm sure that's something that Tanya or Joanne could send on as well.
Go ahead, Tanya.
I have the enrollment information by town for the choice in for Warwick.
Great.
Good.
So, give me one second, and I will get that for you. And as far as I know, and I don't know if this is 100% accurate, I do know there's one student that comes in that is a student of an employee at the school, but I don't know if there's any others. So, that information might have to come from Joanne. So, right now, we have one student from Athol, two from Greenfield, and 20 from Orange.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, now I'm going to go ahead.
Mike has a question.
So, my question is, when you base your enrollment for next year, if this was to move forward, if you were to base your enrollment next year, if this was to move forward, and you ended up having 28 school choice kids coming in, and based on what kids move up from sixth grade and what kids are moving up from first grade, it seems like for the $5,000 we're getting, we're actually going to be paying more to educate somebody else's kids in Warwick School than is feasible based on that. If, you know what I'm saying? If your choice in kids keep going up and your town resident kids keep going down, we're, we're paying the $23,000 minus, you know, the $5,000 that's coming in, it's, it just, the numbers don't add up feasibility-wise.
Well, I'm going to say, since we would be basing the budget that Warwick is requesting on the Northfield kids and the Bernadston kids, it really would be based on those two school budgets. So, if you were concerned about how school choice was affecting those two schools, then, then you're right, that is something that would need, but that, we're not trying to address those budgets. We're trying to address the Warwick budgets. So, when you're looking at choice students, I've got the mic, sorry, Mike. When you're looking at whether or not to take on choice students, and of course, this would need to be a district and school decision together, just like it is now, when you're opening up those seats, the theory is that you're only opening up choice seats that will not increase your fixed costs, primarily won't increase the number of teachers you need to have, or if you have expensive buy-seat publications or anything that you're purchasing, that you would be only adding choice students that aren't, that aren't going to be at, she does say she has dogs, that aren't going to add any costs. So, and it's because of that concern that we're focusing just on resident students. And I would say, after looking at the numbers, I think, I don't know what you're charging for tuition at Pioneer, but even the tuition in students are not paying the average cost per pupil when you add it all in. So, it is something that needs to be looked at district-wide, but the theory is it shouldn't be adding to your, your expenses.
Mike, and then Renee, did you have your hand up? Did I see you, your hand up after Mike? Okay.
So, I understand that we have other schools with, with higher numbers of people and students in their classes. And the school choice money that's coming in, if you have two or three kids, you know, like Northfield's got four choice in students, the $20,000 that comes in actually benefits the district. Whereas if you have Warwick, that doesn't, let's just say you don't have a first grade next year, but you need to hire staff because you allowed to have choice students come in, and you only had one in district student, it's going to cost us more for that staff than the $5,000 per kid would bring in. That, that's my concern.
So, you're speaking to the situation that occurred at the beginning of this year, where we did not have a kindergarten class, because it would have been more expensive to add that grade. And you're absolutely correct, and I think that decision was made very carefully at the district level about the, whether there was a way to accommodate that. And what Warwick is committing to is those staffing decisions would then be made by the Board of Trustees. So, you would have a large group of folks, many of whom are education professionals, who would be focused just on the school. But it would not affect the district budget, budget in any way. So, what I'm going to ask is that you let me go through the rest of the calculation, unless you, unless there's something you don't understand about the enrollment.
I just got one quick question.
So, I'm going to go to Renee, and then I'll come back to you, Mike. Because I think as we go on with the presentation, school committee members need to have an opportunity to ask based upon the information that you're presenting at that time. So, go ahead, Renee.
I was just curious, and I don't see it listed here, what is the cost per pupil? Is that going to come up? Because I don't see it on this page either.
Prologon is.
Yes, if you could.
So, it's 14.
Is, is it time for me to then go ahead then?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Karen, do you have a question? Okay. Mike, did you have one last question before we move on?
We did not, as a committee, decide on first grade, but we did on pre-K and K. And with no teachers in those two positions, what is going to happen for first grade this coming year? That's my concern.
Okay, that's not part of my presentation. What I want to do is focus on the budget. I know there are a lot of difficult, yes, there are a lot of difficult decisions to be made, but I would like to just explain. And this, this is a somewhat simplified chart. I did give my Mea culpa to Tanya when I sent it to her, because I think it's really important that we agree and we address the structure of the budget very clearly before we start filling in how many staff, how many pupils, down to the penny. So, first, we are looking at now, because of course, there's two components to every, what it costs to educate each student. There's the component that's all the expenses that are shared across the budget, you know, in all those categories that'll go across either all the high school or all the elementary, or both. And then there's the portion that we've got divvied out by each school. And there are plenty of line items in both. But what I'm going to look at first is the district expenses for these 563 resident district kids. And this is grades K through 12. But remember, we're only basing, so, we are still honoring the whole, the whole question about elementary expenses being the base, but let's look at the 563 students that are K through 12. And in that, we've got district administration, and if you've got the full budget, that's on page one. So, that includes health insurance expenses. It includes, you know, all of your, your salaries at the administrative level. Page two includes shared staff, which is a very broad category that does include school transportation, among many other things. And then, of course, the third category is special needs. Now, I'm going to go back over those a little bit, because even in the simplified model, I've got to give you a couple of caveats. So, district administration includes all of those health insurance expenses, both recurrent and retirees. In the structure of the budget, they are all used to seeing every year, and it's not even printed on there, but I think you have heard me mention this before, there is an offset. The school choice in revenues that are estimated to come in for the entire district, because we've been budgeting for the entire district, those have been offset against the health and life category. When we did our calculations, we took that offset out. So, we are saying that, that school choice in funds, I know they don't fit in technically what you would call, and here we go with the air quotes again, revenue, but they are still money coming in, and they mask the true cost of that line item. So, we have taken that out here. So, if you add what is posted on that page of 4,348 and 1169, and you add school choice offset back in, so that's all the school choice in students for the district times 5,000, the true cost is 4,978 for that category. Shared staff again, I think the only thing I have to add to that is that it does include transportation, and I know that when we get our assessments, there's a special treatment of that. And then lastly, special needs, we've got the category here as it's been used straight out of the official budget, but there are more special needs expenses assigned to every school. And that's where you get into a philosophy decision about, should all special needs expenses be considered under one umbrella, or should the, the staff who are assigned to specific schools have their costs assigned, those, or those expenses assigned to the specific schools? But you can see the line here, it's actually, this is meant to be very clean. I have one more caveat for you, but this is the very clean. You take the 563 district students, you look at the shared expenses throughout the district, and you divide it out. And before we're even adding on the school-related expenses, we are paying a lot of money to educate each student. And that is before we even open the doors to the school and consider any of the school-related expenses. Now, the last caveat I'm going to have is we did simple math here. If you get more complicated and break it down category by category, the truth is, instead of 14,000, it's closer to 11 or 12, depending on whether you're talking about a high school, middle school student, or an elementary student. But it's still well above 10,000, no matter who you're talking about, in shared expenses, again, before you get to the schools. So, again, because we're not talking about all of the school budgets, we're just interested in Warwick's, and we are interested in developing our own model of education. The next step, as you take the fiscal, you're looking at the fixed, the district-wide costs, and you're looking at the cost for elementary students. You're adding them together, agreeing on what they are, and multiplying it by the enrollment. So, these numbers up here represent different possible resident enrollments. And we picked 20,000, so we all can do the math in our head. Well, although I'm not sure I can still do this in my head. But, so if there were 15 resident students, no matter how many choice students there were, the district would be asked to hand over a budget at the beginning of the fiscal year of $300,000 to Warwick to then run the school. And then the math goes on like that, very straightforward. And then on the last page, we're showing you, and certainly anybody who's interested can, can ask to get as much detail as you want. This is the slimmed-down version. We look at Bernadston for this year, when we look at it just for resident students, when you look at it without that, that school choice offset, so you're dividing by 139 students, which those of you from Bernadston know is fewer than the feats you, you hear in the, in the hallways. You've got 11,431 for the school, you've got that 14,000 we were talking about on the first page, and you get to 25, 795. Even if that 14 is a little bit lower, you're still getting to well over 20,000. Same for Northfield. On page four, you've got Northfield's budget. It shows that it's 1.4 million to run the Northfield School. If you divide that by the 155 resident students, you've got 9,365 per student, plus the 14,000 we already talked about, and again, well over $20,000 per student. So, that's how we're asking to structure the budget. Now, I got ready for questions.
Are there any questions thus far from members of the committee? Go ahead, Mike.
So, you took the total budget from Bernadston and Northfield, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So you didn't take any of the special needs students that they have in those schools, the costs to educate them and have them be part of the school?
If they're resident students.
If they're resident students.
They're in there.
There's, so.
They're in, so anybody who's a resident student, no matter who they are, is in that number.
Right, but that's 139 is into that, you know, the 1,589.05. So my thing is, because you've got to hire.
And the special needs expenses are built in to this number and spread out across the whole district, because we all have to share that burden.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. The total number in the budget for Berniston includes that, correct? The special needs.
This includes the special needs students?
I'm saying the.
This budget.
Could I finish, please? The 1,589.05, does that include the special needs students? Okay.
All the resident ones.
So.
Well, includes everything you're paying for the school.
My thing is, when you have a bigger pool of students, 139 kids, it's going to cost you more most of the time to educate those kids.
Per student.
So the budget, I'm saying the total operating cost of Berniston, because you've got more costs involved, is what I'm saying. You've got more special needs than you do in Warwick. So if you.
Percentage-wise, you have more special needs in Berniston?
Dollar-wise.
It's a percentage, because we're going down to per student.
I wasn't going to talk. Here, again, I'm Sue Hollins. I was a special ed administrator for many years, and I've helped look through the budget. The Berniston page in your budget includes special education staff in the Berniston School, and there's another whole category, which is a different page, which is district, it's called district special needs. So special needs are in two places. I said the exact thing that you're saying. Districts have specialty programs, and they figure out where they're going to go. So one school may have a program for autistic children who may have 10 staff, and another school may not have that program at all, which would drive up the costs, which is why, when we've talked about it, we've thought the real way to do special education, since it's based on where children land by chance, is to put 100% of your special ed costs in the special ed budget, and then there wouldn't be the variation you're talking about. But we didn't create the budget. What we tried to do, looking at what you spend per school, is just using the way your budget's presented. But it does include special ed teachers on a separate line, and it doesn't, in that school, and it does include special ed assistants on a separate line just for that school. But there's still other costs for special ed that are in the different page.
Tanya would like to speak to that. So go ahead, Tanya.
So the way that this particular budget that Diana put together after speaking with me for a couple hours yesterday actually is based on our old by-school designation. So each school has their special needs aides, the special needs teachers, and any specific special needs staff to that school is where the numbers are coming from when she's talking about her school budget. The sped costs that are shared district-wide, the 1,447, that is your, our district administrator, our district office manager. General special ed costs that serve all the students in the district, they're not specific teachers. It includes a psychologist that are shared amongst all four of our schools, as well as the tuition outs for all of our out-of-district or private special ed students and special ed transportation. So I'm hoping that clears up the difference between the school special ed and what Diane has here for the special needs. She does have it broken out by-school as well as the shared part for the district correctly. Does that make sense?
Has everyone found that? Russell, go ahead.
So I'm going to try and, I don't know, I'll try and make this, so in a simplistic way, basically what you're saying, and this would all have to be negotiated in MOA anyway, so that's not going to happen tonight, but you're taking, let's say Warwick right now costs the district $27,000 per kid. Under what you're essentially proposing now, you'll drop it to whatever the average is for our elementary at the other schools. So if it's 24, it'd be 24; if 20, it's 20. So that's the basic proposal.
That's correct.
Were you able to hear that, Tanya?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that people understood the way that, what she was presenting, that the special ed costs weren't included twice. And just to reiterate, I don't know if it was in the audience talking about the special programs, but if there is an aide at Northfield serving a student in a special program, they are actually in the budget for the school that that student resides in and comes from. So if we have a Warwick student in the high program, it's actually in Warwick's budget, the same with Berniston or Northfield. So all of that stuff has been really right-sided in our FY '20 budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we'd be very happy to continue this conversation.
Sure.
Just like this.
Are there any other questions thus far? No? Okay.
I just wanted to make one point about the whole per-pupil cost, is this is a formulation that we've come up with, but this is something that would need to be worked out in the MOU. Tanya presented some different numbers per pupil cost at the last meeting, and they were lower. So obviously, these need to be sorted out, and, you know, we're hoping that that can happen as we move forward.
Could I make one other comment to respond to this gentleman that had to do with choice? For special education, if you have a choice student from anywhere, and that choice student needs a one-on-one aide or a full-time teacher, those costs are 100% reimbursed under the school choice reimbursement. It's 5,000 a student plus 100% of special ed costs. So they might be in your budget as an expense, but those are reimbursed.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. Tanya, and then we'll go to Jeannie, okay?
So just to clear up the additional funds that come from the state for the school choice, I did defer Diana to our special ed director to get more detail on the submission for that, but looking at last year's choice in students, we were only reimbursed an additional $12,000 for two students that are educated at Warwick, excuse me, Warwick, that are special needs students. So it's not covering 100% of those costs.
And my answer to that was, boy, I hope I found a pot of money we haven't used yet.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeannie.
I have a question. A student from, I'm just going to use Greenfield arbitrarily, school choices into the Berniston Elementary School.
Oh, I'm sorry. Berniston accepts a school choice student from Greenfield. Halfway through kindergarten, they do an evaluation of this student, and D, they have special needs. Does that 100% reimbursement then happen for Berniston, or because they weren't a special needs student when they entered, does that remain at the 5,000?
My understanding is, first, you have to submit your costs. So if you're the receiving district, and two children come from Boston, I'll just make that up, and they, your district has to figure out what they cost and submit those costs for special ed, and that's what's reimbursed. That's my understanding.
Go ahead, Tanya.
Yeah, so that is true. So basically, what happens is there are enrollment numbers and student information that gets submitted throughout the year. So the school choice number that we receive at the beginning of the year that we're going to get for that special ed student or students might change throughout the year, and the state does an adjustment in June to provide us any additional funds that we weren't receiving throughout the year.
But I'm talking about a child who comes in not identified as special needs, and through the years.
Right, so those are reported throughout the year, and that change can be reported so that we do get the funds in June.
Okay, so the payment would happen in June, once?
Basically, yes. So if there's any changes to student enrollment, that gets right-sided with the true up in June, one way or the other. So if the student comes off of, say, an IEP or goes on it, those types of things get reported by our special ed administrator and office manager.
Okay.
To the state.
All right. Thanks, Tanya. Go ahead, Renee.
So I guess I'm still seeking to understand, wanting to be enriched by your view, and so.
Renee, can you use the mic, please?
Sure.
So in my willingness to seek to understand, I still am very confused about this budget, because I see, for instance, the budget listed for Berniston under, so 1,589, that's not the current budget for Berniston. So this is not, if it was indeed equitable, it's just north of 1 million, I believe, currently, based on the number I saw recently with our new combination of a school. Is that, are you coming to give me a different number?
She's bringing you over the budget page for Berniston.
So I am just looking at page two of the budget from October 8, and I'm looking at the bottom line from the GL budget line, and that's the number we used. So certainly, Tanya can let us know if we've used the wrong number, and I'm happy to redo the spreadsheets, but we were trying very hard to go from existing reports, just to keep the conversation about the structure rather than.
Yeah, so that isn't a number I've seen in a recent report, so this was generated on October 11.
So I'm going to have Tanya speak to that, because she is, go ahead, Tanya.
So the budget as of October 10th at our last school committee meeting, for Berniston alone, based on the by-school budget, again, I am reporting that as well as by-category now, because that's how a lot of the administrators were used to seeing that. It is the 1,589. And that was as of October 10.
Okay. So, all right, then, if that's accurate, because the way I was seeing the number, it was just north of 1 million, so if it's truly, okay, thanks.
Did you hear what she said?
Yes.
Sharon, did you have, or Russell? Sharon?
I feel as though we're getting so much information right now, and I still, I have a ton of questions to this point. And when I see this book that was so beautifully put together, there had to be a ton of work that went into all of this, and yet, there is no way that I could absorb all of this information tonight, and we'd be here till tomorrow morning, and I probably still wouldn't be able to make a decision. So I, I mean, hats on to all the people that.
Yeah, that's not as much a budget question, so I'm going to hand this over.
Excuse me, I'm not done.
Go ahead, Sharon.
I'm just saying that I'm feeling, as a committee member, I'm feeling very overwhelmed with all, again, all this new information, and it's as though people are waiting on the edge of their seats for us to take a vote, and I really, I really cannot absorb all this information tonight.
Russell, did you?
Yeah, do you mind if I talk to Mr. Kingsley and I? So I spoke with Mr. Kingsley about this situation a few days ago, and I think he and I are on the same page, which is, if the committee is going to think about this, it can't be, you know, this is, you can vote on the prospectus, but ultimately, the MOA is really the document that needs to be decided upon. So in my opinion, what that would mean is that, you know, this is a good presentation. I think the prospectus was very detailed. I think Mr. Kingsley agrees with that, too. But that said, you need to probably, if you're going to do it, you need to set up a subcommittee. That subcommittee would meet with the Warwick individuals, and you'd come up with an MOA that would have to be beneficial enough to the committee that they'd want to proceed forward with entering an MOA, assuming the state agrees to this whole concept. But that wouldn't happen tonight. I mean, I think tonight, you have to decide, do you want to vote on a prospectus that would move forward, subject to you entering an MOA that's beneficial to the district? And I would say it needs to be very close to, you know, similar savings to closing Warwick, probably. But if you look at something like this, and it can work, and I know Tanya and Mr. Kingsley have looked at the numbers, too, if you can come up with something in an MOA that would work that way, and would be beneficial to the district, and would work out for Warwick, you know, that's the path forward if you're going to do it. So it wouldn't be to try and figure out the numbers tonight and make sure they're accurate and all of that. That's going to happen, you know, through a subcommittee, in discussions with Warwick. You'd have to come back and vote on that MOA at some point, and in that meeting, you would definitely want to look at the numbers and make sure the MOA makes sense. I don't think you need to do that tonight. I think tonight, you need to decide, assuming an MOA was beneficial to the district in a financial way that made sense long-term, and that could be workable for Warwick, you know, are you willing to go to that next phase or not? That's the way I think both Mr. Kingsley and I look at it at this point. I hate to speak low, but that's essentially what he told me.
You summed it all up in a couple of succinct sentences.
Go ahead, Mike.
I think at the last meeting, what was decided is that if we give our blessing tonight, we're saying to the state, it's okay to move forward with them giving us approval to move forward with the MOU after they give us approval. And I don't think with the information, with the facts that I have, and, you know, I'll speak to that when we get to it, because I want to let them do their presentation, we're going to tell the state, yes, we want to move on to the next thing, which is telling them we're okay with it. And I don't think that's probably where we want to go at this point.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom, and then Doc.
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to point out. We submitted on September 12th a 20-page document to the school committee that outlined key elements, executive summary, the basic approach. Two weeks ago, on the.
I just can't hear. Could we have the side conversation to stop, please? I just can't hear clearly. Sorry. Thank you.
Two weeks ago, on October 8, we gave you virtually the whole packet. There was one section missing, which came a week ago, the facilities and transportation. What came on 3:00 AM on Friday morning was redrafts of some of those other sections, but the basic information was already there. Also, I wanted to point out about the MOU, one of the questions that came up at the last meeting on the 10th came from Kristen. Specifically, she was asking for more concrete information regarding the MOU. And we did some homework, and in the packet that was sent to you early Friday morning, there was a proposal for a draft MOU. I have copies of it, we can pass around, but it was sent to you, and we do want to talk about this, and we want to get into the specifics of it. The attorney's certainly right, it doesn't need to be done now, but we need to start thinking about it.
Doc, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yes.
I think what I want to do is maybe paraphrase what Russell said, which is that you are not voting on your approval of the prospectus tonight. You are only voting to forward this proposal to the Department of Education so that they may determine that it is of a sufficient quality to warrant you and them looking at this further and allowing this development process to continue. So no, you are not voting that you are okaying the prospectus in any way.
Karen, and then we'll go to Sharon, okay?
Would you remind us of our timeline to get everything settled? When would you expect to hear back from the state? And then what is your next deadline? Because I think there is a lot of work to do, and it doesn't all have to do with numbers. Some of it has to do with preparation for contingencies, which I haven't seen in all of your documents. That might be very important. It has to do with union issues that would have to be resolved. And I know legally, you don't have to do all of that before you submit your final application, but I think it would be woefully inadequate if you did not do that work ahead of time. So can you remind me of the deadlines?
This prospectus is due to the state by November 1. My memory is that we would hear back from the state within three weeks as to whether they allow us to continue, whether they support our process. Then by, if they do that, then the final application, which includes the MOU, needs to be to them by December 20.
So further into the, yeah, it's, it's an interesting timeline, and you can see what we've done between June and now in terms of this packet. What I would say in regards to the MOU, you received a basic outline of it. Understand that most of it has been drafted, and we are, and I think with, even if we wanted to go to a subcommittee, we could have, I am confident that come the next school committee meeting, we can have a draft to all of you to discuss and look at and presumably vote on in the December meeting, along with voting for the, for the approval, assuming everything moves forward. But, you know, I am confident that that can happen if there's a willingness to proceed.
Sharon, and then Mike. Sharon, and then Mike.
At the last meeting that we had here with you, I think we left with, we asked that there would be three questions, at least these three questions answered, and so far, I haven't heard much about them. But who's responsible for all of the transportation? The payroll? How is that gonna be worked out? The staff and the union, these are things that, there's some really important questions here that we can't answer tonight. And those were the things that we had asked at the last meeting, that would come forward to us before we made this decision tonight. And I see that it's impossible for us to answer those questions tonight.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike, and then... Mike, go ahead.
Regarding the draft MOU, is it, you say you've got a draft MOU?
Yeah, it was just...
Okay. So my thing with a draft MOU is, to me, an MOU should be worked out between both parties. I don't think it should be just created from one side. So I don't understand how that works. You create a draft MOU, you bring it to the table because we're in such short time, 'cause we can't have a subcommittee meeting to do it.
We were asked for concrete information about what would be in the MOU, trying to provide.
It just shows what would be in each section.
All has to be negotiated.
Before when? What's the timeline of the MOU?
The MOU needs to be submitted by the 20th of September, of December. Obviously, you know, it needs to be in the school committee schedule.
And we would also have to, correct me if I'm wrong, we would have to take one more vote prior to that application submission on behalf of the committee approving that movement forward. Okay. Doc, did you have something you wanna say?
I just wanted to address Sharon's fears. I can understand that you would be...
Concerned, and I'm not afraid. I have concerns.
Fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. That you are protected by all the people working in this office specifically devoted to charter schools on the state level. And you saw one of those a few years ago, a few weeks ago, when Alyssa Hopkins came. And I was very impressed by her presentation, because she seemed very knowledgeable, and she knew charter schools inside and out. And there's a whole office of people just like that, and they're there to protect school committees. That's partly what they do. And they will look at this prospectus and vet it, and get back to the school committee, and give you their opinion. And in that way, I think it's very helpful to understand that you don't need to know as much as they do.
Okay. I'll try to be very brief, and I hope what I say is helpful. When I got involved, I was told the school was going, was at risk of being closed, 'cause it was too expensive to operate. So what I did for the select board is I went through the whole budget, and I found that you were correct, it costs more per pupil to operate the Warwick School. So there were two categories that I had. One was the facility, 'cause each of your schools, there's a certain amount for heat and light, and electricity, or whatever else there is. There's a whole series. So I looked at what the per pupil cost was just for operating the building. In the elementary schools, it was, I don't remember exactly, around 1,200 a student, just for the facility. This school, around 1,500 or 1,600. Warwick, around 3,000 or more. It was true, running that building for that number. And the way that was addressed in the plan, there's two basic parts to the plan to address the main concern of money, is that Warwick is offering to take all those costs out of the whole district budget and pay for them as a town. So now that building's gonna cost less for everyone and everybody, and since my understanding is Warwick pays about 10 cents on a dollar for district cost, for the amount they're going to take out over two years, so they can adjust their town budget, it's about $80,000 coming out of the regional budget, which Warwick's gonna pay 100%, maybe 50, I'm making this up now, maybe 50,000 the first year, and the other 30 second. So that's how the facility costs, it's not gonna cost more than other children, that's gonna come out of your regional budget, and then Warwick will take care of that 100%. The second is just the basic cost of educating 23 children, not looking at choice, because choice is only supposed to be when you've already set up your classes, and you have an extra seat that doesn't cost you anymore. And you were right on that also, that Warwick was costing more per child. So the solution to that, because everybody, every child's gonna cost something, is to find out, well, what's the average cost of the other elementary schools? And whatever that fair amount is per child, Warwick will take that, and they will construct a budget, so their children are educated for the same amount. And those were the two big issues. I mean, there's a lot of detail about using the internet, but the basic issue was to address the concern that Warwick costs more. And the two approaches is to take out all the costs for the building, and to make sure that those children in Warwick don't cost any more than the same-age children somewhere else, whether they have one teacher, three teachers, whether they use online learning, whatever it is, they'll work with the fair amount per child. There's no change to transportation, because you have a five-year district contract, and Warwick stays a district school. So there isn't any change to that at all, unless Warwick comes up with some great idea, and then they'd have to work with the superintendent and the contract. So this unusual form of charter school keeps the school as a district school, and all those expenses that are shared in the district office, they're all there, unless you agree on something coming out. The cost of the facility will be borne by Warwick, and the cost for educating the children will be the same amount as it would be for any other children, however you figure that out. And then they'll decide the budget. Thank you.
Tanya, did you wanna?
So I did go over this information with Diana when I spoke with her yesterday, 'cause we did look at the average facility cost per student at each of the schools, and it was a little under 1,000 at the two elementary schools, Burniston and Northfield. However, Warwick's was around 2,000. The same is true for the transportation. It's around 3,000 per student to transport those kids to the school versus roughly $1,000 for the other schools. And that's the nature of having less students. So by getting that per-pupil cost right-sided, you're essentially having to come up with creative ideas that may or may not take away from the education of the students to cover those increased costs per pupil. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but those are the two things that really skew the per-pupil cost at Warwick. And I did wanna circle back and answer Mike's question earlier, while we're on the topic of class sizes and stuff at Warwick. If we did not have any choice students at Warwick right now, the 1-2 classroom would have 10 kids, the 3-4 classroom would have seven, and our 5-6 classroom would have six children.
Could you just repeat, the 3-4 classroom would have seven?
The 3-4 would have seven.
Mm-hmm.
And 5-6 would have six.
Okay. 1-2 would be 10, 3-4 would be 7, 5-6 would be 6, correct? All right. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I wanted to address a couple of Sharon's questions. I think Susan answered about the transportation. The payroll would stay the same for the time being. Warwick has talked about the possibility, over the course of the first year, of taking on some of the central office accounting services. Because we have a payroll person, we do accounts payable and things like that. But it wouldn't change right away. It's something that we would study, and perhaps there's money from the startup grant that can be helped with that transition, if, in fact, that makes sense. The second point I wanted to make is about the union. And the way, I just wanna read to you the way it's set up. In a Horace Mann to school, only the teachers in the school that is converting vote, because it's converting. The law requires teachers, the teachers' contract to continue for teachers to have no reduction in salary. A key question, though, is how you define the teachers. And that got brought up last time, and we sought the opinion of the charter office, and were basically told that you need to consult your district attorney. And in light of that, we've come up with a proposal, and I have copies of it over there to pass around, as to how many, you know, the full-time teachers, they would have a full vote, you know, halftime teachers, et cetera. And... Let me see, I think they're right over...
Do you have the document to share?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. That would be great. Tanya, I'll just have Tanya, she has something she wants to say while you're getting those documents.
While you're passing those out, I actually have a couple of questions, and I don't know if Russell can answer this, or if this is something you guys need to go back to the state and clarify. Because the Horace Mann Charter School would have their own tax and employer identification number, I have concerns around how the payroll would work, because would you file payroll taxes for your employees under our tax ID if we're still processing the payroll in-house? Or would we have to file separate 941, 940, unemployment returns and such, surrounding the employees that fall under that tax ID? And that creates additional things to think about in this MOA, because we do have, because of the size of our district, and we are trying to share staff and make efficiencies, we have a number of specialist teachers that are shared amongst all the elementary schools, and we have special ed staff that's shared amongst all the elementary schools. So how do we report that, if we have to report on two separate employer identification numbers? And would the Horace Mann be purchasing a module to use our payroll software, because it would have to talk to each other for things like the payroll taxes, as well as the health insurance deductions and so forth? And that's a big piece of this, when you're talking about separating out employees, but keeping them the same.
I can answer that, I think. If the charter is approved, then there will be no change as the next year begins. And the reason that charter application has written that there would be no change from the district handling this, is because it's complicated. And the reason the state automatically gives $500,000 over three years, if it's approved, is so that someone can be hired who's an accountant or business manager, and work with the charter school and the district to figure out how it might be different, and how, you know, if the payroll went to the town, how it would work. And so, there wouldn't be any change at the beginning of the year. And there wouldn't...
Because you can't just change it as we go along. We have to have a plan in place.
Right. And the MOU says it would be...
It takes extra hours from our staff to not only figure out how it's gonna work in the MOA, but to perform those duties moving forward as well. But like I said, my biggest concern surrounds the whole payroll tax issue, with separate employer ID numbers, unemployment rates, and all those types of things that surround processing payroll, completely outside of whether we're using the same system or not.
Well, that's why you get startup grant money, and that's why this is written, to make no changes initially, but to look at it.
Right, those things would need to be spelled out in the MOU. Who is responsible for that? How would, how those would be assessed as a deduction possibly to the payments that would go to the charter school? Who's processing their accounts payable? And all those things would have to be very definitively spelled out in the MOU, in order for the administration at central office to understand what its roles and duties were moving forward with the Horace Mann. It couldn't just be, you're gonna do it, and then we'll figure it out later.
Go ahead, Sharon.
You sent us a packet, an email, and in it was the organizational chart. Do you have one of those available that you could put up? So that everybody could... I know, I found it right here.
Would you like to reference that document while we're speaking, Sharon?
Sure. It is, it's set, it's under the school improvement plan. No, it's under the organizational chart tab, and it's a Warwick Discovery School organizational chart. And it shows right from top on down, how this will be organized. Pretty interesting. Yes.
It's the third tab from the rear.
The superintendent, who is gonna be making a great deal of decisions, is way down on the chart. It's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 down on the chart. And for us to even think about having any kind of, making decisions about, we won't have any control of some of the things that we need to have control of. One of the things is money. And I can't see how, right now, the way this is, I can't see how it's gonna be beneficial to the district.
The benefit to the district is that it's per-pupil cost, and you get exactly the same. We get to run the school, and run appropriately, with heavy oversight from DESI. It's a change, and I know that that feels awkward and a little clunky, because you're used to controlling every aspect of it. But what we're saying is, you give us per-pupil cost, we'll run the school, we'll run appropriately. We have a lot of oversight from DESI, a lot of oversight from people who are well-experienced with schools, being former teachers, and we are gonna be continually talking with Superintendent Shagel, or whoever the, no offense, I'm not saying you're not gonna be here, but I'm just saying, you know, at some point...
I may not be.
At some point, you have to retire, right? So, you know, with retirements and everything, we're still gonna have to have, we're planning to have a school for an extended period of time. And, you know, we wanna continue to work and have those conversations, but it's, that's the thing, and one of the things I sent out not too long ago, was explaining how some of the other schools in the area work. Where it is, there is the autonomy there, and that's something that we're seeking, is having a little bit more autonomy by managing money. But we're saying that we're going to have that conversation, and the continual back-and-forth conversation. It doesn't have to be our own island, but we want a little bit more control, and that's where the breakup is. Not, I guess breakup isn't probably the right word, but, you know, that's the difference between the way it is now, and the way, the way we're proposing it. And that's the way Horace Mann charters work, is you give us, and we run the school, we run it appropriately, with a lot of, I mean, there's a lot more oversight, if you look, and with the Horace Mann charter, as opposed to a regular district school.
So Tanya has a question about the financial staff. Where do they fall in the organizational chart? Under...
Well, all the staff in the superintendent's office are listed under the Board of Trustees, with the superintendent, all the district-managed services, as per the MOU. And all the town services, if they're taking care of the school, that's all with the MOU, with the town. And the superintendent is still in between the Board of Trustees and the head of the school, just as he is between your school committee and the principals. It's the same role.
Okay.
So how does the MOU with the town then come into play with this being voted, moving forward? Is that all something that's gonna have to be decided on by December as well? Because my concern around that is, if they are gonna take over, say, accounts payable, that's something that the town's gonna have to assume forever. But if you guys go forward with a budget, and your townspeople don't approve that cost, where does that leave the district? And how does that happen? Do we have meetings with the town coordinator, and the school committee, subcommittee for this Horace Mann, and the educational task force, in figuring out how this MOU's created for services?
The guidelines for a conversion...
Because the town would have to agree at the same time, before the school committee voted, to move forward with it, I would think. And does that require some sort of special town meeting?
The guidelines for the Horace Mann conversion school, this is an operating school, it's different than starting a new school, allows the board, the applicant group, to have as many of the superintendent's services as they want to have. So they could decide to never have any change with any of the accounting services, and that's just the way it is, they'll continue sharing the cost, just as they do now. Or, what the plan says is they're gonna take... Or what the plan says is they're going to take a look at it and then work something out with the district if they think they can. But initially, there isn't any change, and there wouldn't be a change unless that was worked out, and the extra money you get from the state would offset the time needed to make a proposal. But the difference with the facility is if they take the full cost of who's going to do plowing and who's going, I don't know what it all is, of the light and getting the plumbing repaired or whatever it is, that would be another MOU between the school and the town. Since the town's the applicant, I don't think all, for me, all the school committee would have to worry about is that those costs are coming out of your budget and the town's going to pick them up because that's the whole proposal by the town.
So, on the facility side, you guys would then be in, if you guys were going to completely take that over, I would envision that those contracts would be done through the town coordinator's office as well. And then, does the custodian become an employee of the town and a partial employee of the district? Because we have since decreased the percentage of the custodian at Warwick to 75% and at the high school of 25%. So would the town just reimburse us for the cost for that staff? Or would they be a split employee, which would affect their benefits?
Did you have any answer to that, Susan?
Well, if the town decides that it's going to take over all the costs of the school, then they would hire a custodian, a town custodian to manage the building. Again, they could work out with the district, we want to keep the same custodian, we'll reimburse you. I don't know. But the big issue is there would no longer be any cost to the district for, that's now in your budget for heat, electricity, custodian. But those conversations haven't been had yet, so it's hard to say.
So, one more thing to think about, the cost that's out there right now for facilities is around $83,000. You would need to add the cost of benefits for that employee to that facility's cost because that truly goes with that custodian. So the district would no longer have that as part of our administrative budget, per se. So just, again, things that I'm throwing out there that I think need to be ironed out in the MOU.
Renee, I saw your hand up earlier. Would you, did you want to ask a question?
Thank you. So I have lots of questions, but I'm going to try to be concise, and I might not, I might come back to some of them. So the first one that's actually in my mind as far as, throughout my journey of seeking to understand what's best for the district, because I feel like I've been seeking to understand that for quite some time. So as I listened to the consultants that were hired by the Hart Committee, I had an aha moment based on their reports. Something that I hadn't known previous was that the state, in issuing the Chapter 70 money, looks at the number of pupils in our district as a district number. Prior to that, I thought about it like per town, as Warwick is attempting to do now. And I guess that gets me to where I've been stuck on the budget and the cost per pupil because the state views us as a district. And they don't assign borders to the number of students in our district. And we found ourselves in a place, and I understand years ago when we entered the district agreement, autonomy of the elementary schools was a part of that agreement. But as in anything in life, things have changed. The one thing for certain is change, right? So as we change, that became a new fact for me. And so, given that information and my desire to seek an answer for the district, I became a proponent of applying an economy of scale and rightsizing to, say, two elementary schools if that's what, based on what the state is viewing us. I believe they only, they don't count homeschool, and I wish I had my notes, and I have many pieces of paper, but I didn't bring those specific ones. They do not count our homeschool population. But even our school choice gets allotted to our towns. So they come up with a number based on the residency of our towns in our district. But they view us as a district, so they don't apply a cost-per-pupil equation to us. So we are asked then to educate our district students under that auspice. So that, for me, is the crux of what, what we need to do that's right for ourselves and our students, and to shine the light on what we do well and what we should be able to continue to do for all district students. So if the essential question this evening is, is the Horace Mann two proposal as beneficial as closing Warwick to the district? I just wanted to remind folks, the state was clear that they issued Chapter 70 money to the district. They don't actually pay attention to how many children are in households in Berniston and how many are in Warwick and so on and so forth. They give us a number, and because we agreed to be a district, we also agreed to educate our students in the best way possible. And so we find ourselves in this predicament, not predictable, not because necessarily of any one person's actions, but it's just the evolution.
The formula to which they...
So, I just wanted to remind folks of that. I have way more to say. I could certainly enlighten about the view of the PVR UEA, but I see people are eager to comment. So I can get back to my other things. But I just felt like that was essential to this, to get us back on track to what we're talking tonight. If the essential question is, what's best for the district and how does the state view this? And if, if the state isn't applying a cost-per-pupil, because that's actually not the way the formula works, I think that therein lies the rub.
Go ahead, Ms.
So, there's, there's multiple things to unpack with that. First is the, the state looks at the Chapter 70 money, and all that Chapter 70 money goes into the district and then comes out. The reason why we're looking at per pupil is because that's what's been put on us as we want to cost lower the cost. Now, in terms of this whole, you know, if we group everybody together and we get a better cost savings because we have a large amount, and is that what's best for the district? I thought about this the other day, and my analogy is, I'm a, I am a member of Costco, and I shop there all the time, and Costco has some really great deals. And you can have some really great things if you put a bunch of people together. But it's buyer beware. Some things do not make sense to makes, at a huge level. Some things you don't get right because of that. I can buy 10,000 toothpicks for a really cheap amount of money, but it doesn't really make sense. So it's not always cost average of being this giant thing and having it work halls when it's not always perfect, it doesn't always work right, and it's not always what's best for our students. What is the benefits of the Horace Mann? We are looking at a lot of different things that have never been looked at before. We don't, I was shocked when I found out that we don't look at virtual learning as much as we should. We could do a lot more with virtual learning than we do now as an education in the Commonwealth, not just Pioneer, not just district, not just Warwick, the whole Commonwealth. Our proposal puts a component there. Partnering with two different colleges to help us develop the curriculum and the grounds, that's, hasn't been heard of. We have people emailing us, asking us, when are we going to get a chance to, to work these out with you? That's innovation. And all this stuff that we are going to do and we're going to learn, by law and by right and our desire to, we are going to provide to anyone in this district and beyond within the Commonwealth that wants to know it. It is free for the taking and for the asking. You can have everything we've learned. It can benefit the district by these models that we're doing. They might, they're probably going to work, and we can show other teachers those models. That's a benefit that no one is talking about. And it's, we have to do it, but we want to do it. We want to make this district better and a good place to be in. And that's a big part of this, the development that we can do for the rest of the district.
Go ahead, Sharon.
We are doing some of that here. I'll bet Mr. Shadell could tell us.
Yeah, that's what I'd say. I mean, we have virtual high school now. We do a lot online. And I guess my, my question comes back to what Jeff Wolstrom originally asked, is what is the Horace Mann proposing to do that the district cannot provide? Like, what are you proposing to provide? Like, the partnerships with the colleges are great, I feel like that could happen anyway, just like we were doing with GCC. But I think that was the original question he asked, and I'm still not sure. I mean, some of the things you're talking about are wonderful. I think they could happen as part of the district. So what's, what's the separating factor that you need to break off, as you say, or separate from the district and provide something completely, completely different? What is that?
I'm not sure I'm the right one to answer it, but I thought the whole initiative was around the town of Warwick wanting to have a school in the town of Warwick. And if the district wasn't going to close the Warwick School, you'd have a different situation. But I'd like to answer the question, the confusing question about Chapter 70 and the enrollment. The state, on the DESI website, there must be 25 reports that have to do with enrollment, reimbursement, calculations. And the very first conversation this group had with the state was exactly what you're saying. When you're a regional district, the state doesn't divide anything up by school, you have to do that yourself. And that was one of the benefits of this whole process, was actually digging in to see what it costs per school. So the state does give you a per pupil cost, and last year's per pupil cost for the district, no distinction among school, was about $22,000 and something. And this year will probably be a little higher because you have fewer students and your expenses up. But the foundation enrollment, which you brought up, the Chapter 70, is completely different. They've just posted how much Pioneer will get per student for foundation, Chapter 78. It's a little over $10,000 a year. And for that, they have their own way of calculating enrollment, and that's every resident student you're responsible for, whether they go here, whether they choice to Athol, whether they're in a residential school. And so their number of every single resident student that lives here, no matter where they go to public school, is a different number than how many students are in your district. So, so the students that are here in orange, orange gets the Chapter 70 for them, and you get Chapter 70. Okay, so that's why that number doesn't match with how many of your own students are going to your school.
Okay. Go ahead, Tanya.
So it's almost out, like if they leave, we still get 5,000 for the students who leave.
So I just want to add on to the whole idea that we're talking about enrollment and what we get money for. That number's called foundation enrollment, and that is the number of resident children, pupils in that town that the district is responsible to educate. So we do get Chapter 70 for kids that choice out or charter out. Unfortunately, a lot of times that money we're getting from the state obviously doesn't cover the cost of those choice and charter out students. The same applies to the money that we get from each town as our minimum contribution that is part of the assessment. That is, the minimum contribution portion is based on foundation enrollment. Our above minimum contribution, that is the second piece of that, is currently based on a five-year rolling average of enrollment for the district, which is part of the regional agreement, that's a whole other topic, to get that right-sided so that everything's based on foundation enrollment and the children that each town is actually responsible for educating. Because when I presented the budget this past year, it was shown that the two smaller towns were essentially paying a little less than, percentage-wise, by about 1 to 2% than the amount of students that they were actually responsible to educate. So that foundation enrollment is a really important number to be thinking about.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, there's a couple of points I wanted to respond to. Tanya mentioned about the intricacies of payroll and the other central office services. We're not going to try and figure out that in the MOU during, in the next two months. It's way too complicated. This is something down the road. We're going to stick with what, what is working now, and, you know, if it moves forward and we get the innovate, the funding, we can do a study on that. The other thing is to answer what John was saying about what's different about the Horace Mann is at least a half million dollars in innovation funding, funding, which is normally going to cities and suburban areas. It's not coming to rural areas like ours. And this is an opportunity for it to come here. Teachers have so much to do just to, to do the basic curriculum, maintain the standards. They don't have time to, to innovate with the kind of programs that we're talking about. This is a way that they can get paid to get that professional development, to enhance the programs.
So I just have a follow-up question, Tom, to the beginning part of your statement. So if things were to change down the road, as you say, we would then need to develop an additional MOU that would outline that so that it is clearly documented about the changes that would be occurring?
Yes, there would need to be an addendum or a separate MOU. Yes.
Okay. Did anybody have, no? Go ahead, Karen.
I would like to have a little more of what you have in mind about when you develop these innovative programs. And the, in the charter school law, it states that the school committee of the district that has a Horace Mann Charter School shall develop a plan to disseminate those practices that you develop. So that's going to be on us. If some of them include blended learning, for which you get, say, software licensing and so forth, then there would be an expense attached with disseminating those to the other elementary schools. So I'm wondering what your view of that might be.
Well, what's in the proposal is that the Warwick School would have a monthly newsletter and would share it with the superintendent's school committee, and that it would be shared. I don't think, the requirement is that you share whatever you're doing that's different with other schools in the district, not statewide. But there's an interest, if, if this were approved, it would be the first small rural charter school ever. And I think what Tom said is right, none of the money that comes in for innovation reaches small towns. Every other state I've looked at has small, some small charter schools that are the right size for rural areas. And this school, the intention is not to grow and to grab other students, it's just to exist on an average per pupil cost. So the responsibility to share information is pretty easily done. So it's written so that the school would do a newsletter, share what it's doing, and the superintendent could, it would just be shared with the other schools. However, there would be an opportunity probably for the superintendent and some of the teachers to speak at conferences if, just about the fact that they had whatever they were doing that was unique because it would be the first time. So I think there would be recognition of your district for having something innovative, and it would be, like, even in my travels, I hear other districts saying, we didn't know anything about that. Wouldn't that be great for, and of course, you're not interested in other districts, but should you be? But just this discussion is letting people know there's this conversion opportunity where the teachers are still in the union, the school's still in the district, you know, that so many things stay the same, and that they'll get a minimum of $500,000 in innovation funds. So it's generating discussion, and you, you would get a lot of attention.
All right. Hold on one second.
Wait, just follow up, because that wasn't my issue there. I'm talking about our other elementary schools in the district, and that the committee is supposed to develop a plan to disseminate the practices, not information about the practices such as in a newsletter, but actually disseminate those practices to the other schools in the district, and that may end up costing money. So what is your view of that?
So disseminate means to provide to. I'm not trying to be smart on that, Ms. O'Neil. But, so, sorry, still a student of yours after all these years.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
So I think the big, big thing here is, it touches on what I just talked about, about providing that to the district's teachers. So we would provide that information to them. Now, that, there's nothing that says the other schools or the other teachers have to put those in a practice. It's just educating them and providing them, and providing that. So that could be, we can work that out as, you know, a letter, or an email, or memo, or something that explains what we're doing and how it's going. Hand it to Jonathan. Jonathan shoots it out to everybody else. That's disseminating the information. There's, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's nothing that says that we, that anyone else has to do anything with it, other than, this is the idea. Now, if they want to do something with it, that's awesome. That's excellent, and furtherance to that. And that's something that, as a district, you know, you, the committee would have decided if they want to do anything with it, but that information is there.
All right.
The word isn't information. It's practices.
I'd like to speak to that, is that, I don't see why, if we're having, we're bringing in somebody to do a professional development with the Warwick teachers, why that can't be extended to other district teachers? Why not?
Well, I guess my question would be, the professional development, is it going to be aligned with what we're doing? Is it completely separate? And then how are those teachers going to travel to Warwick? Are the other teachers going to come here? Where are you going to find the time to do that? There's a lot of things that go into play that it's, I know what you're trying to, trying to say and do. I just, I'm still not sure 100% why this, why this couldn't be done as part of the district versus breaking away from the district. We're doing some innovative things now, and I guess I don't have a distinctive, besides the money, which seems to be the only answer, what else is distinctive?
Well, the money leads to being able to do more training, development, that you wouldn't be able to do otherwise. So, and there's no reason to limit that just to Warwick teachers if others wanted to participate.
All right, so I'm going to go to Sharon, and then Tanya has a question, and then we'll go to Renee, and then Doc. Okay? Go ahead, Sharon.
The committee has an awesome responsibility here. We're here for the students in our district. We've been in some really tight places in the past several years, and we have a superintendent, a business manager, that has helped us get out of a little hole. Our staff has worked extra hours. We've created new programs. We've come a long ways in the past couple of years, and we're still getting better. I'm so thankful for that. I feel it's a real risk for us right now to take on any kind of a project that is another risk to us in this district financially and for the children of this district. We have got to, as a committee, we signed on for this job to be sure and protect the educational process for our children in this district, and I think we have to keep them foremost in mind.
Okay. I'm going to go to Tanya.
So I have two questions, and this, this isn't necessarily a dollar-specific thing, but is there anything in the MOU that outlines when a projected enrollment would be given to myself for budgeting for the Horace Man line item for the following fiscal year as we finish up our budget in January, February? So we would have to have an enrollment to budget based on that per pupil cost that we would be paying to Warwick in order to make it part of our budget at the district level? And my second question is, once that number is determined, and we're giving you X amount of dollars per student, per pupil, what happens when a student comes on that needs an IEP or something like that? Is the Board of Trustees going to have to agree on the hiring of that individual, even though it's state mandated? Because they have to pay for that individual, but they wouldn't be getting additional funds from the district because they're getting a per pupil cost? So are those types of things in the MOU that you guys are proposing, or will they be?
I think one of the confusions, and it shows up in the questions, is still thinking that this particular idea of conversion is starting a new school that's completely independent. It stays a district school. It does have a governing body, just like Orange, that would look at the school. To answer your question, the plan is, the requirement is that by April, the budget is decided. And so the plan is that each year, because your enrollment in rural areas is so influenced by housing starts or businesses coming in or closing out, that each year, somewhere around February, there would be an agreement with the superintendent's office, what number to use, and what per pupil cost to use. And then by April, the board would come in with a proposal for a budget based on that number, and it would be part of your regular budget deliberations. That would be the number. So it wouldn't be that the, that Warwick is saying, "Here's how many students we're going to have." It would be both the superintendent, it wouldn't be so different from what you're doing now, which is figuring how many students are you going to have, two grades to a teacher, three grades to a teacher. And the second question, correction for the IEP, because this is still a district school, the special ed costs, what Warwick believes is all the special ed costs should be shared, and the special ed costs would still be shared, just like they are now, that there wouldn't be any difference.
But the special needs aides that are specific to students is not a shared special ed cost. It is a school cost, because it's specific to a student at that school. The only items that are shared is like your psychologist, your PT, and our district staff and supplies for special ed. That is not a shared cost.
Well, I think that's one of the discussions. There's a million one in special ed costs that are in different schools, and it's all diagnostic-prescriptive.
So my next dilemma with the April date is we require...
Hold on one second.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I was just going to say that the reason special ed is shared as a district is because one or two students moving in can throw off a little school by a couple hundred thousand. And that's why I believe you have a special ed budget and that all your costs should be shared, because there's no way to predict that. And it's like health insurance, you know, you have some high risk and low risk. So that's something that has to be worked out with the district.
Yeah, that would definitely have to be a conversation with myself and the special ed director, because the way we currently budget is that each school pays for their own special needs teacher, their own special needs aide, and the only costs that are shared is the transportation and any staff that is truly shared across the district.
Tanya, isn't every single cost in the budget shared by assessment?
They are shared by assessment, but when you're talking about calculating per pupil cost, and, so if we're going to give you $20,000 per student to pay for all of the employees that are employed at your school, and an assessment to the district for shared costs, that is something that would create a variance and would be something that Warwick, as a Horace Man, would need a contingency for, because we would then be offsetting the funds to the Horace Man by that additional staff member, because it's a school cost. So if your budget's $500,000, and you have $200,000 of that as staff, and you get another person that costs $20,000, you would have to cut $20,000 somewhere else in your Horace Man budget to be able to pay the district, so to speak, for that employee.
Okay.
So that's where the conversation around having contingencies has come into play, as well as out-of-district students that get sent to special needs, because that's not something that...
My understanding is also that the, that if there's going to be a shortfall like that, the town is going to back this up, and those are reimbursable expenses, the special education expenses. So if there's a short-term shortfall, it's, the town's responsible.
So the town will cover the difference, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm, that's what I would think.
But again, this is just something that would need to be in the IEP. I want to go back to that April budget date, because if we're given a number of students in February, or January, actually, we would need to, because we have our public hearing in February on the budget, and the budget subcommittee would need to have that as part of our budget that we vote on at each meeting. The number of students would determine the district's budget for the Horace Man for the next year. We couldn't wait until April to come to an agreement, because we're required to, in March, provide that budget to the town in preparation for their town meetings every year.
I think you said February, right?
The requirement is just to agree on a timeline. Warwick wouldn't say this is the timeline. It's just the budget has to be in, according to the guidelines, by April. But you could say you want to work out what it's going to be in January, December, whatever you want.
Okay, so the April is the deadline to the state by the Horace Man, not to us?
Right. So I want to go to Renee, and then to Doc, and then I saw a hand over here, so everyone gets an opportunity to ask their questions.
So I just wanted to address, because I've heard committee members wonder about some of the concerns of the bargaining unit.
Mm-hmm.
So I just wanted to be, so I just wanted to be crystal clear, as far as some concerns that have been raised in a short amount of time from the bargaining unit about this, and certainly there's much more to be had. And I've really made a concerted effort to get through everything that was sent, so thank you for that, but I'm sure there would be more questions had there been more time to, to look at the material. So as stated, when the DESI presented that evening, we had concerns, and we remain concerned, about the change in working conditions, the length of day, the 90 minutes earlier that's purported here on the schedule, how that's going to be managed, the length of the school year, the additional professional development requirements, and the head of school notations. Currently, just to bring, to remind folks, in case it's not current in your mind, the current principal teaching position is under a MOU that was reluctantly signed by the bargaining unit as a one-year agreement, with our concern about blending administration and teaching, and not being comfortable with that, so it was on a one-year term. And so that would be need, need to be revisited. I understand that it lists that the trustees would then become the hiring committee, so it would be on their purview of who, who are, what they, who, what individual they would put in that position. And again, to your point, Sharon, the flow chart, the trustees are hiring, and because we're a bargaining unit and the ebb and flow of the size of the schools and the enrollment being uncertain and tumultuous currently, it's not uncommon that staff members, because of seniority, have been placed in other schools and/or reduced from schools. It actually happened this year in Warwick. Someone had to go to Northfield, and then that person made a different decision. But anyway, so, again, that begs the question, if the Board of Trustees is in charge of the hiring, does that put the bargain, both the bargaining unit and the administration in a pickle in terms of if they have purview over who's in their school, and here we are in the bargaining unit, but we don't have a place? That is a question. And/or, because you can't force children to attend charter schools, is there at least a minimum that you could also not, you, you wouldn't be able to ask staff, teachers, to work at a charter school if they chose not to? Because the state is clear that you don't have to, students are not required to attend charter schools. So how is that all going to play out? And in terms of, I, you weren't able to completely answer the question, there are 12 professional staff in the building when you count itinerant staff. I'm hearing the beginning of the answer, that everyone would be given a per diem quota for a vote. But it, the truth is, it affects the entire bargaining unit, whether they're in that school or not. Now, how the state views it is certainly in question, but for the school committee, who bargains with the entire group, I feel, and I hope that you're compelled to understand our concerns about this. So those are our concerns currently.
Renee, at the last meeting you shared, you had, the bargaining unit had taken a non-binding vote. Do you have that data available, again, to present to the committee this evening?
Yes, and again, we didn't...
Because I don't have my notes.
Right, and I only had limited information to present, so they weren't fully educated, if you will. So again, we just wanted to take a temperature on that. Can find it, but from my memory, it, 31, 21, and 12 abstained, but I will find it for you. I'm sure, I had it here earlier, so sure.
And what was the vote? How was it phrased?
Again, we weren't even sure of how to phrase it, because there was such limited information at that point. So we said, and I don't have the ballot in front of me, but it said something like, "Would you want to allow teachers, staff, something like that, to be allowed to be in our bargaining unit?" Those employed by Horace Man to charter school, to be a part of our bargaining unit. So it may not have been the question, again, not understanding the full realm of it, and even the uncharted territory of not having one in the state, we didn't have, and the MTA had no view on it. They do not support charter schools in the independent realm, but because there's not one in the state, we couldn't get a ruling from the MTA.
Okay. Did Mike, and then just, Doc, sorry. Go ahead, Doc, and then Mike, and then we'll go to Susan.
I forgot what I was going to say, sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mike, and then we'll go to Susan.
I'd like to, actually, let's talk about the students here for once tonight. What I would see happening, I'd like to maybe have the Warwick Task Force maybe go check out a model in Berniston where two schools have been combined, and talk with the administration over there, and the teachers, and see how the kids are doing. Also, there may be a possible move of sixth grade to Pioneer. As this lady from the state has said, that if you're, you've got a charter school, the sixth grade can stay at the charter school. Now, I think for sixth graders coming here, even though they're getting a great education where they're at, there is possibly more opportunities here for them to spread their wings and learn more items, you know, computer, robotics, chorus, band. If that happened, it's a trickle-down effect. So we brought fourth grade band back this year. If sixth grade moved up, we could have third grade band. You know, things change, and I would just like to have the committee think about where we were, how far we've come in the last 12 months, and think about the kids. Forget about the money right now. Think about the kids for a second, and what we provided in bringing stuff back by making corrections. So, yes, innovation's great. Every school in the state is doing innovative things. Orange is in the process of possibly putting an addition on, and renovations of their building, if the voters approve it. And how is that going to affect the numbers at Warwick? My thing is, what is the bottom line for student enrollment in an elementary school for this district?
Okay, go ahead, Sharon, and then we'll go to Adam.
Yeah, I just want to say something about the students, the few students that I know that were at Pearl Roads and had to move to Berniston Elementary. I want to tell the Warwick people what a fabulous thing that ended up being. The staff at Berniston was so good with all of those students. They opened their arms, and these kids are doing great. They're happy in the school. There's more for them to take advantage of. My granddaughter's going there. She loves it. Your daughter's going there. How does she like it?
I think well, but she's not the most stable reporter to me at home, so, but as far as I know, and Renee's her teacher, she seems pretty happy.
She greets me with a hug and a smile every morning when she gets off the bus.
She did tell me this afternoon, she was like... She did tell me this afternoon, she's like, mommy, I love you, and I love Mrs. Kier too.
Go ahead.
And one of my neighbors also goes there, and I can tell you what a heartbreaking thing it was for us to have to do to close that little school. And yet, our kids are doing fantastic.
Adam, and then Doc.
Okay, so I'm going to switch hats here. I am a parent of a Warwick student, and I'm also a parent of a future, potentially Warwick Discovery School student, so I would like to give you my perspective as a parent because I think it is very important in this conversation. When you compare Leiden to Warwick, it's apples and oranges, truly, it is. And not in the student, but in the school, there was a difference in the schools. We have a wonderful school already. I'm not trying to downplay Leiden, but it was an older building, we have a brand-new building virtually. Things are going great there now. Our students are very happy where they are. I personally, this week, had deep concerns with putting my son on a bus and sending him down Northfield Road, and I understand that Leiden, parents send their children down that road into Berniston. But to scrap a wonderful school and a beautiful community and take out the autonomy and take away the individuality and the difference that what Warwick is versus any other school, and I know you're shaking your head saying no, but you cannot grasp, unless you were a parent there, you cannot understand what Warwick means to us as parents. And that's something I know that I will never, ever be able to articulate to anyone because I thought it was hoaxy until I got there. Truly thought it was a bunch of malarkey until my son got there. We do things on a small scale, we have things that are wonderful, and I know other schools do, but we have an individual way of doing things that is different and unique. We are a little unique in that regard, and that's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing to have individuals, individual schools, individual identities. I don't think that that's wrong. And this idea of putting everybody into one giant area and saying, you should do fine altogether, I think is a misnomer. It's like the meme where you have the elephant, the snake, and the chicken all standing under a tree, and they tell them to climb the tree, and they're all going to be graded the same way. It's not the way it is, and Warwick people are different in that regard.
Okay.
So, you know, again, that is of the parents, and I'm not the only one, you know, it's a tight-knit community, so all of our parents talk, we have a very, very tight-knit community. All of them are in agreements that this is not something that we as Warwick parents want. We want to keep our school open, we want to keep it running, we have a wonderful school. That's not something we want.
Right, go ahead, Sharon.
I think that this is the time for Warwick to open their minds and realize they're no different than Leiden, okay? We all felt this exact same way about our school. We were special. Our kids were getting things that other schools were not getting. So I wish that you would realize you're not the only ones with a beautiful, special school. Yes, yours is newer, but ours, we had the same type of community, and somehow, that's getting buried, and somehow, you're minimizing what we went through to close our school. That's what it's feeling like, because I'm just saying. And I think that that's wrong for Warwick to think that they're so special that they can't realize what this district is going through to even try to think about keeping that school open. It's costing all four towns more money than it needs to.
And that's why we've done this, which no one else has ever done.
That's what's frightening.
I want to take a moment and get back to our order of discussion because I, Doc, I had told Doc that he was next in line, and then I see Sue's hand, and then I see Jim Bell's hand. So I'd like to be able to maintain the questions, the discussion, but I also, I'm looking at the clock that's in the back of the room. It is nine o'clock, so I would like everyone to be mindful of the time as well. We do have a tendency of having very lengthy meetings, so go ahead, Doc.
I don't know if anybody's been following the Red Sox lately, but they're not doing very good. But the thing about the Red Sox and all baseball teams is they have farm teams that help them bring up students, you know, who are baseball players, and, you know, it strikes me that closing schools is not a good thing to do anytime. And the reason is that the district needs farm teams of its own, and when you close schools, you lose those farm teams. And if you think this is pie in the sky, think about what happens to Warwick or Leiden if their school is closed. Typically, studies have been done documenting this, typically, real estate values drop by 10 to 15 percent. No, they typically, I can send you the studies if you want me to. Okay, fine, I'll send you three.
No, I don't, I'm just saying that the pound of Leiden has sold more houses in the past six months, and the prices have not gone down.
That's great, that's great.
So if that's, I don't-
But this is, it's, all right, whatever. But if you think that more families are going to move to this area when the hill towns have no schools, I think that's pie in the sky idea. And if fewer schools move to this area and settle in those two towns in the hills, what's going to happen to the registrations in the district? Overall, they're going to drop because the populations in those towns are going to drop. And these studies have documented that a small rural town that loses its only school suffers losses of population and real estate values and, of course, membership of students in school districts. So it is short-sighted to think that closing schools will solve your problems, especially considering that the budgetary problems that really plagued this district and has taken it to this point it is now are not occurring on the elementary level. They are not.
So I'd like to go to Sue, so Sue has an opportunity, and Jim had an opportunity, and I also do have a question as well, so.
Okay. At the start of this process, when it became clear that the town was going to proceed with pursuing an alternative to closure, the Select Board activated the Advisory Committee. So those of us on the school committee have been along with this group for the whole ride. We were advised by the Ethics Commission that it was not appropriate for us to do the work of this committee because we work for this committee. So we have not done their work, we have attended their meetings, we have listened, added ideas, been present to, an absolutely impressive process. I came into the process very skeptical because it is seemingly so complicated. I also came into the process knowing my town and knowing what we're capable of and how we have handled challenges in the past, the school itself being one example. That school became the amazing, beautiful school it is because of so much time and energy by so many people in town. We have a history, a track record of taking on big challenges like this and not dropping the ball and being successful. Our firefighters built their own fire station, we built our own broadband network. We have been here before in the face of challenges. What I have sort of come down to is my town has recognized that it has been more expensive for the district for us to be operational, and what I hear our town saying is, we will take on that burden for the district. What also is different from Leiden is this group who have put in so many hours and so much creative energy into trying to come up with an alternative to closure. Our town meeting invested funds to hire a consultant. I just think that for a moment, even given the complexity and all the questions, we need to recognize that, that this is a large group of people who have devoted months and months and months to learning, communicating, documenting, and attempting to collaborate with this committee for this project. That didn't happen in Leiden. The other thing is, the state wants innovation, and our town is a good bet for pulling that off. We don't have all the answers, but we're willing to try, and our families seem to want us to try. So while it is complex and while there is so much still to figure out, I will tell you, I have left my doubt behind, and I will give the school committee my advice, which would be to fully engage for the benefit of all the rural schools across this country that are struggling. We need a new model, and I believe our town would be a good partner for figuring it out. And I believe eventually, it would be a benefit to the district. I know that, right now, it just feels like an additional burden after crawling out of the hole we were in. My advice to you is, bank on us. We will be an asset.
So I'd like to go to Jim, then Karen, and then I'd like to be able to ask my question, so go ahead, Jim.
It's more or less a comment. You know, we've been going back and forth, back and forth, and I think we could go back and forth and back and forth, oh, for the rest of the night. So, you know, do we need to take a deep breath and then decide what direction we're going in? The other thing is, my head is freaking exploding because there's that part of me that, well, God, in 25 years, how many Warwick kids have I coached, including Adam? And how many parents have I dealt with, you know, in that history? And then the other part of my brain is, I'm required to do the best for my district. And so, anyway, I just wanted to make that comment and sort of add that, but yeah, we could go back and forth all night. Let's take a deep breath and figure out where to go.
Karen?
Yes, I agree with Jim. I know we're all among people who want the best for our children, our grandchildren, our neighbors' children, the children of our former students, all of you, but I just can't let one thing go that Sue said. Leiden didn't do that. We didn't have an extra year. I want you to remember that. We did not have an extra year.
So my question, if I can just ask it quickly, to the Select Board and the Education Committee, is that you have sought out this Horace Mann model as a way to sort of, as Sue said, save your school. Have you explored other options to save the school?
So when we first, actually, we've been looking at this for well over a year because before the Education Committee was enacted, we were the Warwick, what were we called? Community Educated Task Force, and I was one of the three leaders of that. One of the first things we did was, okay, what can we do? What are our options? We looked at everything from leaving the district to this, to simply letting closure happen and then doing a Commonwealth, which we could do very easily at this juncture, actually. We could also look at doing a homeschool collaborative. There are a lot of options that we have. We, again, we looked at every one of them and we said, we triaged them. What made the best sense? What was the easy, ironically, the easiest for everybody to do, and what was the best for the district? This was what we came up with. Other things, like just allowing closure and then slowly pulling back from the district, means that, you know, in five years, maybe our assessment's 5% because a lot of kids go other places. That's 5% of our, whatever the number is, that the three other towns have to pick up, and the cost is going to go up. So it's a benefit for us to stay, it's a benefit for us to continue on and stay in the district. We looked at all of that. We had some great charts, some great brainstorming sessions, and then we found Sue, and our lives haven't been the same since, in the brilliance she's brought us. But she explained to us how we could do this in a way that would help the district. And, you know, I could go on for quite a while, but the short answer is, this is the best option that we came up with in all of our research. Other options are very painful for everybody, and we don't want to do that.
And I don't want to discredit the amount of work that you all have put in because there has been a tremendous amount of work completed, time, resources, all of that, and I do appreciate that. But I also want to think about our staff, our administrators, who have also had to put in a tremendous amount of work to assist in that process, and during that time, that is taking away from their regular day-to-day duties. So one of my concerns that I'm thinking about is, if we were to move forward in this process, how is that going to impact the responsibilities of the staff that we have now to be able, for them to be able to continue to be successful in the roles that we have them in as superintendent, as Tanya, as, you know, our director of finance? Just something in the back of my mind that I'm thinking of. But I saw Abby and Sharon.
Nevermind.
Okay, go ahead, Sharon.
I think I heard what Sleckman-Night said too, is that he's been to these meetings, and he waited one time for like five hours, and he never did get an opportunity to talk. And that's because of all the things we have on the agenda. A lot of them, we were not able to even address because we're all so busy, working so hard with this Horace Mann to conversion. And as much as I appreciate and respect all the work that everyone has done and the words that Sue said tonight, I didn't hear one thing about Sue that you said about the students in the district, and that's what we are all here for. We have got to remember, this is our first allegiance. That's why we're on this committee, to be sure that all of the students, not just 23, but all of the students in this district get the same opportunity and get the best education that this district can give them.
Okay. Go. I'm sorry, I don't remember. Thank you.
I just wanted, so I think you've debated this enough. I mean, somebody should probably just make a motion and then talk about the motion because I don't think there's more questions, it doesn't seem like. Now you're just getting to the point of talking about whether you should vote yes or no.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's exactly what I was going to ask for, is a call for a vote, but with this situation, everybody's voiced their opinions on why the Horace Mann's model is not good for this district, and opposition is quite strong, it's pretty clear. So my question to this school committee, every member and the superintendent, is what do you propose as the best option for the district? What is it that you think is best for Warwick and all of us as a district? When we're continuing to pay our 10%, we're supporting your budget just as well as you're supporting ours. This assessment is well-shared through this district. We're part of this, we're all in it together, and this is starting to separate our towns. I'm listening to people pick each other's battles as to who's better than the other. I chose to be on the Warwick Select Board for the simple reason to represent our community. I'm here tonight to represent our community as part of this district. So I'm asking you to tell me what you think is best for us. Seems that everybody here has got their own opinions. What does this body want? Are you willing to give us another year so we can speculate or we can come up with answers? Or are you going to close us? Or are you going to close us before this year is over? If you're going to willing to give us an additional year, then maybe we can work out these MOUs, answer these questions, and work with you as a committee, as a group, instead of arguing and bickering and picking each other apart. So, my question is, what do you think is best for us?
Not on the agenda.
So. Mike, you can answer, or question Sue, and then David, please. Go ahead Mike.
I'd like to make a motion for the Town Board to seek approval from state for Horace Mann to Conversion Charter School. That's my motion.
Second. Can you just slowly repeat your motion, please, so I can write it down?
I make the motion for the Town of Warwick to seek approval from state for Horace Mann to Conversion Charter School. I think it's time to put the vote on the floor. I think everybody's been heard that needs to be heard tonight. Time's getting late.
So, Sharon had a second of the motion. So, now it's discussion?
So, I think what we need is a motion for the school committee to approve submission.
Okay, so, the motion, could you please restate your motion? Because I wasn't able to write it all. So, I have Town of Warwick to seek approval from the state.
I'd like to have a vote to make a motion for Town of Warwick to seek approval from state for Horace Mann to Conversion Charter School.
Okay. And there was a second by Sharon.
I think it's really, what you're looking at is whether the committee will approve submission of the prospectus to the state.
I guess that's equivalent to what I'm saying.
Well, it's not the Town of Warwick though.
Okay. So, what would you like to do with your motion?
What's that?
So, the motion was made. We have a second. David, would you like to, you wanted to make a point?
Well, I just think, looking at this form which the chairman needs to sign, it's really calling on the school committee to approve submission of the prospectus, not for Warwick to submit it. Warwick is quite willing to submit it.
We need the, we need the school committee to approve the chair signing this document.
Page seven. But that's your intent. That's my intent. I know the Select Board's the one that initially did the thing back in July, their intent letter. So, that's why I said the Town. The Town is the Select Board. So, that's what I'm.
Thinks it's sufficient. I'm fine.
I would say it needs to be changed so that it's clear that it's not the Town of Warwick, but the committee, the school committee is approving the submission of the prospectus to be signed by the chair and submitted to the state.
Well, if we change the wording to get this vote moved forward, then let's do that.
Subject to the MOU.
I'm simple.
So, subject to the MOU approval?
Well, you submit it, but it's subject to the MOU.
The MOU doesn't have to be voted on.
Decided on this evening.
This is just for them to submit their prospectus. That's all it is. And I said the Town because the Select Board's the one initially set up the.
Should we have Mike rephrase his motion? So, can you rephrase your motion, please?
In the new version? I would like to make a motion for a vote to move the prospectus forward for the Town. If you want to say Select Board because they're the ones that had the letter and intent to be voted on.
Get signed by the chair. Signed by the chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on the floor?
I thought you were going to say the committee to submit, to give approval, to submit the proposed perspective for the Horace Mann. I think that's.
I think that's the intent.
That's the intent.
That's the intent.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? None?
Just a process question. So, we had a motion, and it was seconded. Did we have, now we've amended the emotion, the motion. So, should we vote on amending the motion?
Well, I think the person making the motion agreed to revise his.
Okay, so as long as we all agree.
You withdrew your original motion, correct?
Oh, okay.
And you rephrased it.
Okay, great.
We're going to go with it.
So, do we have discussion? Go ahead Mike.
I would just like to say, when you make a decision, think of all the kids in this district. It is very important to the kids in the district and our constituents, or the family members of those children.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can I entertain a discussion from the panel during this time?
That's up to you. Normally, you wouldn't.
Okay. Sorry, Tom. Okay, all right. If there's no other discussion, all in favor? Please keep your hands up because Jan's not here. So, David, Sue, Jessica, Abby, in favor? Okay, I got everybody. Opposed? Any extensions? Motion has failed? Correct. Okay, the motion has failed to move forward with submitting the prospectus. Okay? All right. I'm with my agenda, sorry. All right. Next on the agenda is the next regular PBRSD school committee meeting is Thursday, November 14th, 2019 at 7:00 PM at Northfield Elementary School. Do we have a motion on the floor to adjourn? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Bye, Tanya.